Rocky will be here shortly hopefully. I have asked Dr. Chad Williamson to come and open us up in prayer, so Dr. Chad if you'd come?
Dear Holy Father, thank you for this beautiful day, thank you for the city we can be proud of, thank you for giving us leaders that believe in you and they can trust you and give them wisdom when they can do the day, when things this city needs, make the decisions that they have to make and affect us all. Thank you for protecting our police officer and fire department, allowing them to protect us with just a minute.
Amen.
Attention, to the late flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody today. Including our attorney Rocky. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Motion in a second to approve minutes, all in favor say aye.
Any opposed? Okay, paid bills.
My motion is first, please, for that five seconds.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed?
I'll give this report to the tenants on the way through.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, first item of business is first reading of ordinance 2017-06 abolishing the officer of probation supervision.
This is really just a housekeeping detail, it's based on consultation with some of the lawyers in our JCS case and based on the way we were actually doing things anyway, this office of probation actually operates under the court and not under the city and we're just clarifying that. So this is a housekeeping detail to make our ordinances comply with what we actually do and we're now doing things in the way that's recommended by AMIC.
And this needs to be adopted today?
Yeah, it does, we've been working on the wording, it's been going back and forth between the lawyers for a while and we need to suspend the rules if y'all are willing to do that and pass it today if we could.
Make a motion to suspend the rule. Second.
Yes.
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 Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, number two, the first reading of ordinance 2017-07 amending ordinance 2013-12, the animal control ordinance.
I don't know how else to put this, this ordinance adds a section that allows the euthanization of convicted animal.
In other words, it's subject, the animal's now subject to the death penalty.
This is a process that we're bringing to a close, I hope, before we ever need it, but we talked about this several months, about the need to have something to add to our existing ordinance, pretty well what it amounts to and I would encourage the press to get a copy of this so everybody can understand the definitions that we're talking about. But if you have a dog that's basically deemed a vicious animal, it doesn't have to bite somebody, if it's deemed to be a vicious animal by its actions or molestation of passengers by on a public way, it's all in here, then that dog is deemed a vicious animal by the chief of police who has designated. And then if that animal subsequently to that has another incident, then it can be deemed by the city judge to be euthanized. That of course could be appealed up to circuit court, I guess, but...
It can and it's not an absolute requirement.
Right, right.
The judge is empowered to take, I mean you wouldn't want a situation where somebody goes over and kicks a dog that's been labeled vicious and then it bites him.
Right.
But so you have to put some reliance in your city judge to be able to look at the circumstances and make a determination whether this is a dog that's dangerous to the extent that it needs to be euthanized, but gives him that authority to do so.
If everybody de-processed, the potential victim and the dog owner, they would have the opportunity to argue this before the judge, before any decision is made and so we're not just gonna go out and kill dogs. But it does give us the ability to start policing these dogs a little bit better. And what I would encourage the public to do is if you've got a, you know, situation, we hear these rumors, but if you've got a dog that's chasing people, they're walking, running, jogging, whatever, you need to make a report, start the process, document it and then we can take care of that properly, but it starts with documentation. If it's not written down, it doesn't happen. So help us, help you, and this gives us the, basically the final piece of this puzzle. We've had an ordinance on the books for several years and this actually covers nuisance animals also. And with that, I would congratulate Jimmy and the inspection crew, they're trying to police the downtown area a little bit and removing some livestock that's wandered into the neighborhoods and being raised for food or whatever. So we're trying to take care of those issues. The chickens are being collated or running loose, if you have chickens in town, that's okay, as long as you keep them on your property and don't have a rooster. I did not know that it's illegal to have a rooster in downtown. But we're trying to address those and we're trying to be as neighbor friendly as we can. So if you've got chickens running loose, you need to put them up or critter geters gonna get them. So this is, this has been a few months into works and I think we're ready to take care of this and I'd make a motion to suspend the rules and adopt this.
Well, let me just say this on the definition of nuisance and vicious, just reiterate what you said, an animal doesn't have to necessarily be vicious to be a nuisance. If you read the ordinance and read the definition, I mean just a dog, it's interfering with you enjoying your property or whatever you want to do is considered according to the definition of nuisance animal.
Right.
And that's, is one thing that needs to be addressed. Now the vicious, that's another part of it, I mean if it's a vicious, if it's a vicious dog or if it bites someone, then that's, is whatever it needs to be taken care of.
You know, all of us would police ourselves on that, I'm not gonna have dogs gonna bite people. I've had cows, German shepherds, and I've kept them in fenced in yards and I've got a dog now that's runs loose in my neighborhood and I'm at the dead end of the road and all the neighbors have dogs also, but if I had a dog that for one minute I felt would bite somebody, I would get rid of it because I've got grandbabies playing around and I'm not gonna have that. And the people just need to be responsible with their animals and I think this gets us to the point of where we've got a little more teeth in the law, so to speak, to make people, if they're not gonna be responsible, we'll help them be responsible.
Yeah, I think that's the key is for everybody to be responsible for your own animals.
You know, four years ago, we addressed the lease issue, this goes a long way toward helping that situation. I personally would still like to see a lease issue, a lease law, but this, if we do this and if we do it right, this will go a long way toward that.
Well, I think it's important because of what we've seen in the communities around us.
Right.
And I commend you for taking the action to do this and I would like to make a motion to adopt it.
I got one more thing to say, I get a lot of complaints from people about dogs, I asked them, I said, have you called anybody? Well, no, we can't ride around the neighborhood and see whose dog's gonna bother somebody. I mean people have got to call in and tell somebody about these problems or we don't know about it.
And they call animal control, correct? And it's published in the paper?
Police department. Call the police department.
Police department.
They'll get in touch with Brandon and all, but we, you know, we've gotta know about it, we don't, you know, we can't be everywhere. So I'd just like to state that they've got to call in, you know, for when they...
Document, that's the key.
Well, I'm confident that this ordinance, which was passed four years ago, has all the tools in it that are necessary to police dogs that are either nuisance or vicious in this, but as you said, it's not gonna work without people making reports. I don't know about everybody else, but I don't want our police officers going around checking on dogs all the time, they've got better things to do, but they'll be there if you call them and make a complaint and the tools are here to take care of it, so...
So we have a motion to suspend the rules and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, resolution 2017-28 declaring Public Works Department dozer surplus.
Maybe you want to tell everybody kind of what's going on there?
It's a 1995 cat dozer that's wore out and we spent money on it the last couple of years, but we're to the point now where we don't need to spend more money.
It's not totally wore out because we're gonna sell it, but it's not where we won't put any more money in.
It's got about a year and a half of life probably left on the undercarriage and it would need to be replaced, so we've got a couple of prices in mind, so we'll put out CO bids, let them purchase it and we're just planning to get another new one. And we've got one here now for trial and I've got all the prices, if y'all want to vote on doing that today, it's fine, or if you want to wait till the next council meeting, it doesn't matter, it won't kill us either way, so. But if anybody wants to see the prices on the new one, but the old one is a 95 and we do need to get rid of it.
Oh, you try to auction that off, if I run the resolution in the paper that we're gonna accept CO bids, give me a time.
We can do it two weeks from today, 11 o'clock at our building.
Well, we won't auction it off, we'll just...
Oh, it'll come in, CO bids come in here.
But you need to set a time that they're gonna be open.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that till...
Two weeks?
Two weeks from today, yeah.
And you want a reserve in that?
I got a reserve, can't tell them no.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the resolution.
I make a motion to accept.
Hey, we got a motion to accept the resolution, do we have a second? Have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do we want to purchase it?
Yeah, do we want to talk about the purchase of the new one?
I think we're ready to move on that, we need to, the dozer's here, it's been working fine, they give us...
We gotta have it.
Is that specific model on the COA list?
Yes, it is, he's got Jessica's emails, he's gonna mail it, email it to her, but there's the one that's...
That need to come out secondary or the seventh, which one's best, either one?
Either one of them.
Okay, alright.
Oh, he's already emailed it, too.
Make a motion to purchase it?
Got a motion and a second to purchase, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, Attorney Watson and Parker discuss the collection of business licenses.
We, as most of you know, Mike Griggs recently retired, came back to work part-time in the inspections department, part of his job duties in his new position is to assist in the collection of business licenses, that's been something that has been needed for many, many years. Most people pay, but there are a lot that do not and I've asked Rocky, matter of fact, Rocky and Judge Hairston and myself met last Friday to discuss the process going forward with these people that absolutely refuse to buy a license, either through neglect or just absolute stubbornness. Having a business license is not optional, it is a requirement, if you are going to conduct business in the city limits of Fort Payne, you've got to have a business license. Physical presence is not the only requirement to have a license, if you conduct or solicit business, you've gotta have a business license based on the type of business that you're conducting or soliciting. And I've asked Rocky to pin a little memo and I'm gonna ask Trish, if she will, to pack it there, Trish, to run it in the paper and make people aware of the next step in this process is Mike is gonna go around once again to the people that he can contact and in the strongest terms possible, tell them they have to have a business license and the next visit will be with one of Randy's police officers to issue a summons, to appear in front of the judge to explain why they do not.
Well, and just to add to that a little bit, there's a couple of options available to the city, if we've got somebody that buys a license today, which is May the 16th, technically they've committed a violation each day they've been open since one of the licenses due...
January the 1st.
January the 1st. And for each of those offenses, they could be fined $500 and imprisoned for up to six months. I don't know exactly how many days there have been so far, but I can tell you that's a lot of money and a lot of time in jail and that's the maximum, it doesn't have to be that. In addition to that, if warranted, the city can authorize a complaint to be filed in the circuit court and the court's authorized to basically padlock the business until such time as they come into compliance. I suspect that this year we're gonna be pretty reasonable, maybe lenient is probably a better word, and that if we have to come back and we have to issue a citation or a summons for you to appear in court and you come in and you pay the next day, I think probably the city's gonna recommend that you pay the court cost on that, which is gonna be close to $300 extra over and above your fine, that it be dismissed. Now if we go around and we have to do this again next year and we got the same people in May that aren't buying business licenses and we have to do it again, I doubt very seriously that we're going to take that same attitude again. And we're probably, and we're gonna start a little earlier next year doing this and then if we've got somebody that's just absolutely chronic and is a problem every year, then we'll look at a couple of solutions and number one, be issued a citation or summons for each day of the year they hadn't had a license and also to take action to have them closed down. None of that does anybody want to do, but business licenses are not terribly expensive in relationship to the income produced, they're tied in many ways to the income produced and it's just a small, it's just a small cost that everybody has to bear. And so I think I can say, based on conversations with Andy, that it's our intention to come as close as humanly possible to nobody being, doing business in the city of Fort Payne without being properly licensed. That's really not fair to all the people that pay their license fee to do business, to let them do business and not pay. So we're gonna be working on that and...
Mike, you've done a fantastic job, Mike, do you have anything to add to that?
You know, I'm just glad to see we're gonna put some teeth in it, like I've talked to you and Rocky both on that, I've got numerous people on my list now that I've made personal experiences with them and talked to them, talked to them over the phone, yes, I promise you, I'll be in the next day, roads long, we're still not getting them, you know, I get a lot of people who tell me, well, I'm not doing any work in Fort Payne at this time, which is fine, but, and I encourage anyone, if you see someone doing roofing, construction or anything along that line, to contact major consultants. If they tell me they're not working in town, if I'm working in town, then, you know, we need to do a little bit more strict on them. We've got to start, put a little more teeth in this where people will be just being late. There was no reason for it, we've got businesses that's been in this town for years that are five months past due right now and I've talked to most of them, not all of them, they still haven't been in the park yet.
I would like to compliment Andy for what he's done over the last couple of years because he's gotten this thing organized and it's taken him about that long to do it. And so this is the next step and I think if, people's had this over the last couple of years, they know, and so we just didn't have the, we wasn't taking the punishment, I guess, seriously, so I'm glad to see it as well.
Well, it's a loss of revenue, which we can use.
Business revenue is a, license is a big portion of our revenue, it's about, about a ninth of what our sales tax is and that's a substantial amount of money.
And it's not something that this council arbitrarily decided to do, it's the law, it's the state of Alabama law that you have to have a business license, so.
Okay, set public hearing for June the 20th to receive comments on proposed ordinance 2017-08 authorizing amendments to the zoning ordinance.
This is the tiny house, small lot, small law ordinance. It has to be, it has to be advertised for two consecutive weeks with the last advertisement being at least 15 days before the ordinance is considered, so the June 20th meeting is the first meeting that would comply with that.
Well, we have the map here, Jimmy, with the overlay at that time.
I can see if Andy can do it.
It'd be nice to be able to, you know, if anybody shows up, it'd be nice for them to see what we're talking about because I think what we're looking at is maybe extending that overlay to the top of the ridge.
Yeah, I wondered if we had agreed upon that and...
The ordinance says it is written at this time, Forest Avenue is the western boundary, so if y'all want to change that before the first reading on June 20th...
And I think that's what that meeting would give us, any input, I don't know anybody to be opposed to that, that would open up quite a bit more of the narrower lots up the ridge there, that would be well suited for some of those, so I'd like to have that here for somebody to look at and then I think that'll go pretty quick.
You want a motion?
Make a motion.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, discussion about purchasing personnel changes.
I think this is something y'all have discussed in the past about letting the city take over the store, as I call it, the purchasing, I hope everybody was in agreement with it, so this just basically authorizes that.
I make a motion.
Make a motion?
Please, make a motion, gentlemen, sir.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, authorization appraisal for the Mapco Station at 5th and Galt Avenue North for $4,500.
When we talked about this last time, we didn't really have a price on what it was gonna cost to get appraised and this is affirmed price by a company and guest that was recommended by Randy Wilson, commercial appraisers, and they can start at any time as soon as we just give them okay to go ahead.
As I understand, they're not only commercial appraisers, but they're also experienced in condemnation appraisal, if I'm not mistaken, and if, I think this is the first step and I hope y'all authorize this.
So move.
They got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. The authorization of the installation of a speed table on Skyline Avenue.
This is a ongoing problem we've had for several years, there's seven families on that road and basically it's a cut through from fruit farm to 35 and they'll come through there 60, 70 miles an hour sometime and there's a lot of kids that play out there and hopefully this will slow them down or make them go down a different way or something. But it's residential neighborhood and some have been fighting for years, their brother lives on it and...
Oh, yeah.
And a speed table is just a nice way of saying a speed brake.
It's a wide speed box.
Wide speed box.
You can take it fast.
There's a couple in front of the middle school up there, if you wanna see what they look like and how they work and hit it too fast and you'll know exactly how it works.
Oh, wait, yeah.
I've had people running from state troopers cut down that road and almost run me off the road.
It's a... That's a speed table's talk.
Well, it'll deter them a little bit.
Find them at the rec anyway.
We usually talk about putting two, but our thoughts was we'll put one and see if that works and maybe we might need to add another one later, but there's a lot, there's a lot of folks coming through there and it's just a little quicker route.
Do we need a motion for that?
I make a motion.
Here we got a...
For the speed table on Skyline Avenue.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Those speed tables are the second most common speed control devices, the first common one is the flashing sign that tells your speed.
It's not true.
Yes.
That's the last one.
They've been 200 playing signs and everything else through years and it's, nobody pays any attention, maybe this works.
Yeah, they'll pay attention to that.
By the way, I saw a lot of them in Florida last week, they're gonna put them in all over the country.
I had the one at the middle school this week.
One of the things that is, if y'all look in the future for speed tables, they're also for directing traffic, so if you have an area in the residential that has too much traffic flow, you can put a couple of them and the traffic will bypass that neighborhood. So you can keep that...
We can, airport 35.
We can. The state will not be happy.
Okay, Mayor, you have a report for us?
I've got a couple of things on the theaters I wanted to mention, we got a bid on putting handrails on the bleachers, I think you all got a copy of that, $3,600, these are the same rails that is out at the Coliseum at Rainesville.
Same rails, it's where?
At the Coliseum at Rainesville, you know, where the bleachers fold up, the rails turn to a 90-degree angle so that they stack along with the bleachers, works really well. That's an install price, so if we want to do it, it's needed, I'll put it that way. Also, at the theater, we've been talking about some problems and various things, but the marquee lights, for instance, I went back and checked just how much we've actually spent on keeping those lights burning, we've spent $18,457 in the last 10 years, but $8,338 was in the last three years. So we've done a lot of work on them, but they still are a problem and we need to keep that in mind when we decide what we're gonna do, we're gonna have to do some work on the marquee as far as structural work.
Is that the marquee only or the sign, the sign also?
Well, that's, they're on the sign as well, I mean the most of the problem I think we've had has been the neon on the sign, the theater, you know, this sort of thing.
I think whatever we do to it, I'd like to, I'd like to try to get something that's got nostalgia to it and not, you know, some kind of new LED something.
It has to be something that looks like what we got, I mean, you know, we'll change it up too much.
Structural parts just on the marquee.
Right, right.
The sign's structure is okay, it's just the lighting, but we've got some structural issues with the actual marquee, I believe, it's kind of pulling away from the building a little.
Just a little?
We're gonna, we're gonna have to bite the bullet on that. I'm like Johnny, I'd love to see it go back as original as possible and I know the big LED signs that you can program and you don't have to change the thing, that would be great, but if you can come up with something like that that looks like what's there?
Right.
I really don't like, and I've had a lot of people say they don't like these real bright LED signs that flash and do all the stuff, so if we're gonna redo that, I'm like Johnny, I'll keep it as old school as we can with the modern technology and there's ways to do that because there's theaters all over the country that are being redone and we just need to research that out and when we do it, I think it'll be a big deal and if we change that lighting out, it's probably gonna pay for itself in a few years in savings.
We don't have an idea as to what that's gonna cost, but, you know, that's something we can work on and I don't guess it's something, absolutely has to be done this year, but it's something we need to plan on doing and do that in connection with some of the structural work and some of the termite issues and whatever we got to do next year, we'd have plenty to do. The bleacher rails, I'd recommend that we go ahead and do that.
I'd like to see that get started, I've seen some people have some real near misses up there and access all the...
Yeah, that needs to be done.
I did see the lady fall.
I'd like to see us go ahead and do that, if y'all good with it. I'd make most of it do that.
Reasonable, right.
Motion on the floor.
Got a motion and a second?
Purchase the rails. Johnny, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Get to have rails now.
They have some rail, that'd be good. I get nervous when I see people going down, they just keep going down.
As far as the air conditioning on the senior center that we've been talking about for the last week or so, we don't have, really have a contract with them. I think that my recommendation would be to fix the unit that's not working now. And then either give a contract, or redo the contract, or give the building to the county or something. I mean, you know, we get a dollar a year out of it, and that's it.
I don't think I'd be in favor of giving it to the county.
I'm not in favor of giving it to them.
I'm not in favor of giving it away.
Then we get the other units looked at, see what the long range plan for them is.
All of them's gotta be replaced. They're all 24, 25 years...
How many units total are there?
Three. Well, there's seven in that whole building.
Seven?
Seven, according to, I think it's three that's in this group that's bad right now. Three or four.
And that was $8,000 to fix all of those, or just one of them? Two?
Well, I think they had a, did they find a leak in one of them? Wasn't that part of the problem?
Well, I talked to our Bryant, and they said they put freon in one of them, and it's already gone again. So they've got, they've got a leak in the land somewhere, where it needs to be soldered together and nitrogen put on it and sequenced. They gave a surprise on one ton air conditioner and furnace and a four ton. That would get two of them to agree with us.
Yeah, I got a price from another one for just the four ton. I thought that was the one that we were really concerned with. And it was like $4,800, but didn't get a price of the other one, so. No, no, that's, that's four, is that four.
Well, you can fix the leak in the freon, right? You don't have to replace it? But you're saying it will need it?
If it's inside the walls or whatever, you can't fix it, but...
They're all 30 years old. I got head money, I might talk to the county, we might split it whether they fight it or they fight it. We don't give anything out of it, so we never have to.
I agree. I, I think we should approach county and see about, see if they share the cost with it.
I mean, they're, they're the ones using it. I, I agree.
And our people use it, and they some of the county uses it.
But I'm not in favor of us giving it.
The county sponsors the program that's there, but there's probably the majority of them are Fort Payne folks that use it. And I think, I think we'd like to keep the building and fix it. So, and we need to get something going on this before it gets any harder into the year.
Well, what we need to do before we accept either one of those is make sure they're quoting the same.
Right, I will.
Well, let me get with Ricky Harkrow, see what I can work out with him. And in the meantime, I'll get other...
Well, let, let me remind you, I don't think it's clear from that contract. And we don't have a contract at this point, but if you look back to the old contract, it is not clear from that contract who should pay for that. And so it might be a pretty good suggestion to have some discussion about some division of that and then get a new contract, which makes it very clear that the city's not gonna pay for it in the future.
Yeah, so what address it, it's better now than contract.
Well, at a, at a dollar a year, the city should not be responsible for anything on that building.
I agree.
Ever.
I think it'd be in the new contract after we get through this hurdle.
Yes, I agree.
You'd be working on contracts.
I would.
You have anything else there?
Yeah, one, a couple of things. Rita Chipwood came up, you know, last time. We told her we'd try to give her an answer about that particular piece of property that she was selling. I, I heard from a couple of you. What's the general consensus is what we need to do with her request.
Oh, wait, one, I thought was there about 300 property?
The one that she came up where she was gonna sell a house by the Hawkins Springs.
Wow, you used a portion of the city property?
Yeah, yeah. I went up there and looked at that. All the property around it, it's got fences and buildings, even part of the house on one of them. We'll never use it. I mean, it's not of any value to us as far as that goes.
I don't have any problem with them using the property.
I don't either.
I don't have a problem with them using it. I really, really don't want to give it to them.
No, I, I thought was just give them, give them permission to use it, 'cause the others are using it without permission.
Well, if you, there's a process you have to go through to do that. You're gonna have to declare whatever portion. If you're gonna do something formal, you gotta declare whatever portion they're gonna use surplus and then enter into a contract with them, if they want something formal. If they want you just to say we're not gonna bother you, then you can say that, so.
I'll get back with her on that.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have...
We'd have to go through that procedure.
Well, you're gonna have to declare, first of all, somebody's gonna have to describe it. And then, then you're gonna have to declare it surplus and enter into the lease. And I don't see a problem doing that.
And if we did that, we would have to do that with all the homeowners up there that's got stuff on it, right?
Well, I would, I would think it'd be better, because look at it, and I don't have it from last time, but looking at that aerial photograph last time, it was pretty clear that the most significant intrusion onto our property was actually from other people. I mean, there were some buildings out there, fences, obviously fenced areas, and this and that and the other. And I, I think if, if you're gonna cure a problem up there, you need to try to cure them all.
If you're doing anything...
You know, and it's not a problem for them to sit on there. We don't have the concern you do if, if you're, if it's, if it's your personal property, you can't adversely possess against the government, so. I mean, we're not gonna lose title to it by letting them use it or anything, so.
It was a storage building, wasn't it, Mayor? Like the building, the house, it's a storage...
Yeah, storage building is what they want.
They had a dog pen for them.
A pen in a storage building.
I think the next door's got a, got a pen, or it's fenced in back yard.
Looked like there was a storage building up at the east end of the property, too.
The first one's got a storage building, and then at the very end, there's really a house or two up there that's just, I mean, it's junk, put it that way.
And then what about the upkeep of it? We've been mowing it. If we do this, can we just stop?
I don't think we've been mowing it. We've been mowing it.
Most everything those folks have got up there is developed throughout the years. They keep up whatever they've got their stuff on.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's not a problem. It's not, it's never been a problem. It's been going on for, I've been with, I've served the city for 25 years, and it's been there longer than I've been with them, so.
There's a lot of woods between it and the spring, you know?
Right.
It won't affect us. The other thing was the police pay schedule that we've been talking about. Are we any closer to having a decision on that?
Yes, we are. We are working on that.
We're working on it as we speak.
We hope we have a recommendation.
Yeah. What was that date? We, we did a date?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? So we should have a recommendation by next Tuesday, get that took care of.
Once that's done, if we do change it, how long will it take, Tyler, to get your program changed?
I don't know, till I stop paying them. I'm not involved in that.
I think what we're looking at is whatever recommendations we're gonna make citywide, fire, police, whatever, would all be done this month, so we could kick off January, or June 1st is your start date to do what you need to do, or whatever time it takes to get that set up. So I think the 22nd would, would give us nearly 10 days to say, here's, here's what we're going to.
Is there a sense that it is gonna go forward to change? I can, I can tell them by Tyler, get them lined up to be ready.
It's probably gonna change. It's probably 80% right now. It's gonna change, it's just, we're, we're, we gotta meet Wednesday night for the final walkthrough on the options. And we got a lot of feedback this week over the meeting we had last week. And we'll see what Wednesday brings.
Maybe you could contact him and find out how, how long it might take.
Well, I would, I'd be skeptical about trying to get it changed and in operation by first of the month, because you always got glitches that's gonna come up.
That's just the benchmark that we got to get started with. If we get it done by the first of June, then as soon as it can be implemented. And one of them would take quite...
It's gonna take us just as long to do it regardless of the cost.
One of them would be a pretty simple fix, 'cause she's very familiar with it.
Yeah, and she brought up a good point. I mean, what we're doing now is manually transferring, and we could manually transfer the new procedure until it got to, instead of computers.
That, that's what we're trying to do, streamline this whole process. Make it user-friendly and employee-friendly. We're making it tomorrow night, 5:00 with the entire police department. And then they're gonna get together and bring their recommendation to the chief Tuesday, or sooner will be when he'll bring it to Brian and Red. Lynn and I have met with Don, and it's not nearly as convoluted in the fire department. That's pretty well squared away, very minor changes there.
So, okay, Mr. Rocky, you got something for us?
I do. I think it's terribly important that we recognize accomplishments of people who work for the city of Fort Payne. And I just want you all to know and recognize that 52 years ago in 1965, Andy Parker won the punt, pass, and kick contest. It was the apex of his athletic career. It was all downhill after that.
But he was six feet tall, it ain't your dog.
He was, he was six years old, and he was 6'4", 237 pounds.
And I won a Baltimore Colts leather jacket.
Still got it.
Can you still get it?
No.
All right, before, before we adjourn, we need to go into executive session to discuss good name and character, so.
Any emotions?
Waiting for Friday's city picnic. Make sure everybody's here.
Motion.
Going to executive session, second?
Yes.
Got a motion and a second? Yes.